I would like to call to order the City, Daily City Women's Commission for Thursday, April 24th, 2025. If we could all rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Valerie Francisco Manchaves.
Gabby Maxman.
Present.
Adrienne Tissier.
Here.
Natasha Opfoel.
Here.
Eleanor Serrato.
Here.
Okay, the entire board is here. We have a very special first presentation. I am delighted to be able to present this proclamation to Phyllis Rizzi. She is truly a role model for all of us commissioners that are here today, and it is fitting that she received this first proclamation presented by the first Women's Commission here in Daly City. So I'm going to read the whereas's if you don't mind. Phyllis, if you want to come forward, please do. Whereas the Daly City's Women's Commission is committed to uplifting and honoring women whose dedication, leadership, and service contribute to the building of stronger, more equitable communities. Whereas Phyllis Rizzi has dedicated herself for decades as a steadfast advocate for the residents of the Bay Shore neighborhood, working tirelessly to expand access to programs, services, and vital resources that uplift lives and strengthen the fabric of our community. Whereas Phyllis Rizzi has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the entire Daly City community as a founding member and champion of the Daly City Age-Friendly Task Force, serving as a powerful advocate, compassionate leader, and tireless champion for positive change. And whereas through her grassroots efforts, community engagement, and visionary leadership, Phyllis Rizzi has expanded access to vital resources, empowered local voices, and helped create a more inclusive and supportive environment for all. Whereas Phyllis Rizzi has exemplified the spirit of civic leadership and shown that one individual, grounded in purpose, and driven by compassion can be a catalyst for meaningful transformation. And whereas the work of Phyllis Rizzi serves as an inspiration to women and girls across Daly City, reminding us all of the power of perseverance, empathy, and local action. Now therefore, I, Adrienne Tissier, Chair of the Daly City Women's Commission, and members of the Daly City Women's Commission, hereby honor Phyllis Rizzi with deepest admiration and gratitude for her legacy of service and lifetime of advocacy, and declares her an enduring champion of community equity and age-friendly advancement. We have a special proclamation for you.
Is this on? Yes. Thank you so much, everybody. It's quite an honor. I'm honored for this. I'm honored to be able to give my time and energy to Daly City. It's been a real pleasure. It's changed my life, made my life much better, and I'm so thrilled that the Women's Commission has become an organization in the city, part of the city. I love the diversity and what is being given by the city to keep this going. So I wish you all a long, long, long time in bringing forth women's voices to the city, and I am so grateful for your honor.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Thank you.
Any of the commissioners have anything they'd like to say? You're welcome to. If not, okay, then we'll move forward. Okay. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the Special Women's Commission meeting of March 27, 2025. Is there a motion?
I motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Oral comment. Are there any speakers that wish to speak here? You have two minutes. Anything you raise, we cannot take action on at this time, though. Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, under Communications, we're going to have a general overview of the Brown Act by our city attorney, Rose Zimmerman.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So I'm going to just really provide very general Brown Act. As you probably all are aware, the Brown Act's about, I don't know, about 150 pages long, so I didn't prepare for that. But I thought it'd be good to just sort of point out, since it's the very first meeting, and also the very first commission here, to just give you some points. So let's start off with who we are. We are the Women's Commission. As you all are aware, the Women's Commission is created by the City Council, which its overall mission is to represent and advocate for women's issues in the city of Daly City. You each were appointed by the City Council comprising of five members, which creates the body of the Women's Commission. And looking at the ordinance that was created, and I anticipate that this particular commission would be even going further as to what bylaws and missions. But the general mission is to advise the City Council as an advisory commission on issues affecting women. And this is to look at and identify, promote programs, educate the community with regards to women's issues in the city of Daly City. This is also to look at and possibly create equitable policies and opportunities to create a platform for women's voices in civil discourse, and also to undertake functions that even the City Council may foresee that the commission would like to see. And again, this is a general overview, so at any time you have any questions, please, it's very informal.
Can I just go back to that last bullet?
Sure.
Undertake functions, as you said, to fulfill the commission's mission?
Yes.
And you were saying something like that the Daly City Council may not... Can you mean like?
Sure. So for instance, a lot of it is because this council, this commission is appointed by the City Council. The City Council themselves might have functions and want you as an advisory board to assess or to look at particular issues. So that's what I mean by functions, that as directed by the City Council as an advisory board, perhaps there may be a particular concern, and they would like the Women's Commission as part of their jurisdiction to take a look at it. Sure. As you're aware, when we're subject to the Brown Act, we have a regular meeting. And the ordinance calls out, the regular meeting is the fourth Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM. This commission can also have what we call special meetings. And special meetings are not within the ordinance. There's a meeting that perhaps the chair or staff would like the commission to take a look at. And maybe it is a retreat or a workshop that possibly you don't want to have it as part of a regular meeting. You might need more. But that being said, the special meetings are also agendized, and members of the public are particularly welcome to be part of it. What creates a meeting? You're aware, three. Three members of the commission create a meeting. The intent of the Brown Act is that basically that you, I'm sorry, this commission complies with the Brown Act, which is essentially as a public body, you have public access, you have notice requirements, which we provided noticing, and it's basically transparent. So all documents that are provided to this commission prior or even after the meeting can be subject to public record. So any member of the public can request any materials that were presented, unless it's an exception that isn't allowed. Okay. The Brown Act, the what and why. So I believe it was 1972, roughly around that time, Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code sections governed the Brown Act. And essentially, it's to ensure the transparency and public participation in local government. And it's essentially to ensure that a local body, a commission such as yourselves, as a body, don't have secret meetings when we talk about public matters and matters within this particular commission itself. The intent is that all meetings of the legislative body of a local agency are open and to the public, and all members are permitted to attend the meetings of the body unless an exception applies. And that exception is expressly stated in the government code. What's subject to a Brown Act, a meeting? And what creates a meeting, like I mentioned, is a quorum of this body, three or more of the five-member board. It's a gathering of a majority of the members of the legislative body to hear, discuss, or deliberate on any item of business within the subject matter of this body. That's very important. I think what's important to note is when we talk about the general mission of the Women's Commission and what's its intent. So when you have the City Council, their jurisdiction is anything related to the city. So, you know, if we're going to talk about streetlights or anything like that, it more than likely may not be the subject matter of the Women's Commission. Who is subject to the Brown Act? Well, we have, again, the legislative body, city councils, elected officials, school boards, board of supervisors, and any body that is created by the City Council, which is the legislative body. You act on behalf of the City Council. Commissions, standing committees, task force, and appointed boards, the Women's Commission as it was created. But one of the essential things to remember when you think of who is subject to the Brown Act, it's the body. So you, as individual commissioners, are not acting as commissioners for the legislative body when you make a decision. It's the body itself, the decision of the body. So if three or more members make a decision, that is the decision that is on the record. Again, we talked about the quorum, three or more members of the commission, subject to the Brown Act. Here is where, I know it's a little bit small, I apologize for that, but where it gets a little bit dicey in what people perceive what a meeting is. When we say three or more creates a meeting, in a very traditional sense, this is a meeting. We have our staff that has agendized it. It's public. It's posted 72 hours before the meeting. But there are other instances that may not appear to be a meeting, and that's where it gets a little bit tricky. So the first point is, anytime you receive discussion, information of a legislative body that takes place before a decision is made, whether it's agendized or not, if you're going to vote on it, essentially, it's a meeting with three or more people. Sometimes you'll have informal gatherings, lunches, social gatherings, and I'm not saying that as members of the commission, you can't be friends and be together at a gathering. However, if it is with the intent to come together to discuss a particular item, that can be considered a meeting, and members of the public can challenge it and say that that was not noticed, that wasn't made available to the public, and not made available for members of the public to attend. In this age, obviously, of electronic communications, meetings that three or more of the board members discuss can be considered a meeting if it's electronic, emails, group chats, Snapchats, I think, things like that. When we start to discuss and deliberate particular issues, even in a chat, and there are three of you, that can be considered a meeting as well. Now, some of the pitfalls of the Brown Act, and I know that many, many of us fall within this, that's what we call serial communications. I know I mentioned that we have three or more members of the commission that come together, discuss an item to be deliberated at, and that's a meeting that needs to be agendized. But you might have situations which, for instance, a board chair, Tissier, might call another commissioner, and there are not three or more people there, but you have one talking to the other, and then one talking to another. That's what we call a serial communication. And you're all discussing the same item. Another one is what they call hub and spoke, and this when you essentially use maybe your staff liaison to say, hey, I'm going to vote on this, and then Natalie now tells Commissioner Maxman she's going to vote on this. That is, you're basically using the liaison or the staff person as a go-between, and that can be considered a meeting as well. Subject to the Brown Act. Exceptions to the meeting laws? Obviously, conferences and gatherings when you're all together and you want to attend a progress seminar, that's not considered a meeting unless you start talking about items that you will be voting on. I'm not talking in a general sense, but like, basically, you may be voting on this item. Other public meetings, if all five people, commissioners want to attend, that's okay. And another one is open and notice meetings of other legislative bodies. For instance, if all five commissioners come to our City Council and want to speak as individuals, that's okay. That's not considered a meeting. And of course, purely social or ceremonial occasions, those are not considered meetings as well. The type of meeting and notice rules. As we mentioned, the agenda that is made available for you, the regular agenda, is posted 72 hours because it is a regular meeting. There may be instances where we talked about special meetings. Perhaps you might want to have another meeting, and those meetings need to be posted within 24 hours of the meeting. There are instances, I don't foresee that it may be before this commission where it's an emergency. And in that instance, it is a one hour, it's an emergency notice that goes to the press, and those instances do not need necessarily to have notice requirements. All meetings are posted at a location that's accessible to the public, and to the extent that you have a city website, it should be posted there as well. What are the basic rules for regular meetings? As you noticed, the way your agenda is noted, you have particular subject areas, like communications, for instance, this general overview of the Brown Act. And the government code requires that you have a general description of what you're going to be discussing. Essentially, no action can be taken on items that are not on the agenda. However, there are exceptions to that. For instance, if you're having a general discussion and you want to ask staff to clarify an item, or an item that might be in a future agenda, it's in a public meeting, you can ask questions and clarifications. Calendering future events, that's not considered an agendized item. Reports of the committee or commissions, if, let's say, for instance, a committee is formed within these commissions, which can happen, and two of the members want to take a look at an item, that report itself can just be a report to the, for the commission itself. Requests for staff to further look at an issue, that can also be something that does not necessarily have to be agendized. There may be instances about an item you might want to discuss in the future, and that may be something, can we have staff explore this item and come back to report to us? And those instances can be a report from one of the commissioners or just a direction to staff. I mentioned before the public access of agenda packets. Anything here is made available to members of the public. To the extent that any member would like to have standing orders or a standing request for the agenda items, it can be made through the city clerk's office. Backup documents associated with this can also be made public. There may be instances, and this comes up often if you're making notes to your own agenda, and to the extent that it is not considered privileged, that may be something that can be requested as a public record as well. Adding items on the agenda. Our agendas are, for the most part, already put in place and presented before the commission at the time of the agenda. There may be an instance where there might be an emergency. To the extent that there is an emergency, we need to add it on this agenda that requires to have a supermajority of the council, I mean, I'm sorry, of the commission, and there has to be a basis for it, something that we need to have it done now, there is an emergency. And then you may also do it if it was already agendized at a prior meeting. So if you have a continued item that, for whatever reason, didn't make it on this item, that can also be added after an agenda is posted. We talked about the public rights and participation. Any member of the public can attend the meetings. Members of the public can record and film the meetings as well, to the extent that they're not interfering with business to that. And so they are allowed to do that. Most of the time, you probably can see it through your phone. For regular meetings, the public can participate and comment on any item on the agenda before the board or the commission makes a decision. And then we have what we call sort of the open mic part of the agenda, is the general comment, general comment section. When we have oral comments and general comments, it's essentially limited to any issue which the body itself has jurisdiction over. So for instance, if we were going to talk about streetlights, and it's not within the jurisdiction, you can take in the comment, but essentially, there's probably not much we could do about that. And now we get into sort of the conduct of the meeting. The general decorum and conduct of a meeting is governed by what we call Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order is sort of the parliamentarian rule, old English parliamentarian, on how to conduct a meeting. That is not to say, Robert's Rules of Order is not the Brown Act or the law. So for instance, if we were maybe not as accurate in how to make a motion, but the motion is there, maybe you said the second, maybe we said it twice, however you want to do it. That does not invalidate legally what we're doing. So it is really there as a guidance. And again, I know it's a pretty lengthy book. I mean, we have copies in our office. If anybody would like to see it, we can get you a copy. But essentially, we use it, and the chair is assumed to be the person to kind of handle the order of the meeting. And, you know, we want to be able to respect free speech, and we want to be able to allow people to speak. That's why we allow for the two minutes. But we also want to make sure that you can conduct business, and that's why we have the chair. We also talked about decorum guidelines. Now, this is the very first meeting, this is the very first Women's Commission. Some of our commissions might want to consider discussing bylaws and decorum amongst yourselves on how to conduct the meeting in line with Robert's Rules of Order, and sometimes that could be very helpful. This kind of goes to the end, which is sort of just the practical part. I think you're doing a great job already in how to make a motion. And essentially, what we have here, we have motions and we have resolutions. When, most of the action here will be made by motion, a motion requires a second, and you can do it by voice vote. If it is a resolution, which is more of a written formal resolution, and you'll have an action that'll be like, adopt resolution, something like that, that's when you do a roll call vote. But I think you can also do a roll call vote, and we did it for approving the minutes, to just make it a little bit more formal, and then that reflects in the minutes for everybody to see. So we got into sort of the end, and this is just- So we got into sort of the end, and this is just violations. There are personal liabilities that can be made for a commissioner or an elected official. It's pretty high standard. And it is really when you're knowing and willfully doing these violations, it could be a misdemeanor. But for the most part, there are civil remedies that members of the public can essentially challenge. And any interested party can file a lawsuit. But the body itself has an ability to cure. So for instance, if you were at a party and you started talking about it, I mean, the remedy really is to notice the meeting and talk about it. And as long as it isn't anything that illegal in nature, you should be okay. You know, they might invalidate your action. To the extent that anybody wants to challenge and they prevail, they are awarded costs and attorney's fees. This last page, and I think you do have this packet, is just some resources there. Again, it's easily accessible, but I think this is, for the most part, the open meeting law, which really applies to your commission. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Rose. Are there any questions for Rose? You're off the hook, Rose.
All right.
We have a question.
I've always been so curious, having been a part of many organizations that use Robert's Rules of Order. Are there any non-neurocentric methods of decorum for a meeting used in California that you know of?
What do you mean by that? Like, different types of process?
Yeah, like you use, or you reference it as like an older English way of doing it. It's very formal.
It's very formal.
I'm just wondering if there were any other kind of adopted ways.
I think, for the most part, what most organizations do, and you even can create your own bylaws, is you use particular forms of Robert's Rules of Order. For instance, Robert's Rules of Order has a higher parliamentarian that really makes rules. And we don't do that. It's really the chair. Or even the city attorney that'll say, does that a motion if I call a question to order? Let's just say you're in a heated discussion and it's never gonna, it's not ending. You can call a question. But in a very strict sense, Robert's Rules of Order is the higher parliamentarian that makes that decision. So that's what I mean when we say we create norms and decorum. Because then you have a process that says, okay, the chair will now, let's call it to order. Or you have somebody that's speaking too long, okay, I'm gonna allow it for this. And I think we create it that way. So when you ask if there's different forms, I think they create their own forms and use Robert's Rules of Order as a guidance.
Thank you. I've always just been like, who's Robert? Why is it?
I know.
We'll do Rose's Rules of Order.
Yeah, it's old. I shouldn't say old, but it's. It is old. It is, yeah. It's the guys with the wigs, I think, right? I think so, right.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Rose. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now we're gonna have a discussion or a little presentation from Natalie on the city's website for our Women's Commission.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Women's Commission. With the establishment of the Women's Commission, staff respectfully requests that the Women's Commission review and consider updates to the City of Daly City website that would enhance and highlight resources for the community. Staff has a few examples to share with you this evening and is available for any questions and/or further discussion. As additional background and information, given that this is the first Women's Commission within San Mateo County, the Daly City Women's Commission has the ability to make a significant impact in assisting the Daly City community with resources that they may not be aware of, that are currently available for them. So staff would like to recommend options for the commission to consider in an effort to efficiently communicate to Daly City, Daly City Resources. And the first would be to review existing Daly City community resources to highlight and centralize on the new Women's Commission webpage. Currently, the City of Daly City offers many resources on the Daly City website, but does not have a centralized location on the website for this information. A few examples include food resources, so this is one example. And others, housing assistance, children and youth services, human trafficking awareness, domestic violence support, financial assistance for a utility rate assistance program, and affordable housing programs. So staff has created a placeholder right now for the Women's Commission webpage on this, this site, on the website, to create resource links as a foundation to build upon. And the second area we wanted to bring up for your consideration is the review of other Women's Commission webpages as a resource for our use in the development of the Daly City webpage. Some examples of other Women's Commission webpages that have a lot of great information include the County of San Mateo, the County of Marin, City and County of San Francisco, County of Santa Clara, County of Sonoma, and Los Angeles County. So staff is happy to discuss any of these recommendations and options to look into and can continue discussion in future meetings. I just wanted to present some options for you to update the website.
Just out of curiosity, some of these other ones, we went through them fairly quickly, but did they have bios and photographs of the individual?
They did, and we can definitely update the webpage to include all of your bios and photos.
I just think that might be a good start, and maybe a group shot or something like that, too. And then I assume, once we put together some bylaws, we'll be able to put that down as well in the mission and all, and just sort of build on it over time.
Definitely.
Okay. Well, we'll get to that after. But any comments or questions or thoughts? Yes, please.
Housing assistance, human trafficking awareness, domestic violence support, financial assistance through our utility rate assistance program, or URAP, and affordable housing programs. So the affordable housing programs are under the Economic and Community Development Department. But then we also have services for housing assistance through the Daly City Partnership. So, and this is the website that lists information for housing assistance.
In terms of what it looks like right now, if it is the website, what's it looking like?
Sure. So it's, right now, it just lists when our meetings are, information that's coming soon on the members, and then our agendas. So it's very there.
And that great panel, it looks like other, it's such a re-.
Yes.
But it's other people's commission?
Yes, those are all of the other commissions. So I think we have a lot of room to work with here.
Yeah. And when the staff were thinking about, when the staff were thinking about which, like, this really exhaustive and actually really beautiful list, how did you all come to those?
Well, I looked at, I did some research with other, yeah, other agencies to see what types of resources they list, and then went through our website to see where all of that information is. Yeah, and just to have it in one centralized location, since it's kind of, and every department has information, but not one particular area that someone could go to for help.
Yes, great. Sorry, one more question.
That's plenty.
It seems to me that maybe there isn't like a Daly City resource for this, but it seems to me that there should also be a resource here for immigration, something like that. Many women in Daly City are immigrants, and it might be worth it to see what is already available in terms of resources in the city.
Yeah, we could definitely look into that.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd love to see resources around community health opportunities or mental health support. I know that caregivers and, we all go through different stresses post-pronatal, and it's really hard to know what resources are available. Maybe not even citywide, but countywide or other nonprofits. I feel like a lot of folks get pulled into San Francisco for those resources, but San Mateo County should have, you know, those sort of things.
Definitely. We can look into that, too.
Thank you. And also, one more thing is just the way we frame them, they're kind of disparate right now. And it would be really interesting to, if we could frame them on this page, as like, questions that someone might have, and then you click the link versus you have to know what to search for. Yeah, because you list, they're all different tabs, but I'm like, where would I go to find that list again? All in one place.
Yeah, no, definitely. We can do maybe like frequently asked questions, something that's just easy to reference.
Gabby?
I do think that's the intent, to add in links on this particular page to organize all of that information. The one thing that I would also add is job readiness. So we have like a teen program right now that's focused on job readiness, but also other resources, like, you know, JVS, for example, again in San Francisco. But V with a, it's with a V. JVS. It's Jewish vocational services, but it's a, you don't have to be Jewish to participate, but it's an organization that helps people develop job skills and helps them find jobs. But other, and then other resources that can help, you know, women find work, but also get, you know, education or skill building.
I just want to comment, I think these are great ideas because when you start looking at what you're mentioning, these could all be areas that we should research around women in our community with the job readiness, the mental health issues, the health, just health issues in general, domestic violence. I mean, you know, we're not doing the whole county, we're really focusing on Daly City. And, you know, I was gonna bring it up when we get down here, but I'll do it with this, too. You know, the census gives us a certain amount of information, but there's also a lot of research that could be done around these things. And also, the county's done a lot of studies, and it, well, a lot of times includes all the cities, and we might want to glean some of that information around women's issues. But we also might want to do a survey and find out just, you know, of just women in our community and talk about these issues, how important are these issues to you? And then maybe we create our own health fair for women specifically, bring in women. Just, you know, this, what I'm hearing all these, I see we have something we can just immediately start building on. I know we have a few other things to do, too, like our bylaws. But I mean, I think these are, a lot of these are great ideas to add to once we have some meat and potatoes to put with them. So I mean, it's a good start, very good start. Yes, absolutely.
I've been seeing around, top of the hill especially, in shop windows, this kind of like landlord abuse or certain signs put up by the city. And I think it'd be really interesting to offer up low-cost or pro bono legal services, especially in regards to the immigrant concerns and issues. A lot of folks in Daly City, a lot of women are in like domestic jobs that they might be getting like abuse in that way through finances or through, you know, not having a formal job where you have those avenues. So it'd be really neat to kind of explore what legal help there is in the county and how we can consolidate that and offer that in these specific ways.
Just to build on that, Natasha, I think like, what you're talking about around caregiving, like just whether it be formal or informal, many domestic workers don't have, are not covered under the Fair Labor Standards Act. And so when I was thinking about the sort of immigration page, those sort of things can maybe cross-pollinate, you know? And whether it is like someone who's hired to take care of a child or a relative that's, you know, ailing, and, you know, many exploitation abusive conditions might arise. I think the legal resources, doesn't even have to be just like a lawyer, but like a grievance process would be helpful. I mean, that's definitely later down the line. But to have the immigr, the legal resources would be great. I also wanted to comment around the survey. I think it would also be great to have just information from residents of Daly City to rank, you know, which of these are the most pertinent at the moment, or, you know, so that we can also discuss that and agendize it and, you know, advise the city council around how to maybe pull resources into one thing or another, so.
The only thing I'll add is, to your point, Adrienne, there have been surveys done and there's data. So it'd be helpful to also on the website have statistics related to women, where we have them from, from any research that's already been done by the county.
And one, one comment, I remember when we had our first initial meeting, Rosie Tahada offered her services if we wanted to meet with her. So I was thinking, I would like to meet with her, because I don't want to reinvent the wheel for some of this, but some of it's specific to us versus broader, and then we'd have to drill down some more. But I would certainly like to meet with her. And if anybody else would like to, obviously, we have to remember the Brown Act, so we can only have one other person. But I just thought it might be a good opportunity for us to just talk to her and find out what specific things they're working on, if they have any of these reports around women's issues in the county in general, or women's health issues. We can talk to Health Department, San Mateo County, because they break it out. And we can also talk to Supervisor Spear and ask her if she's, you know, can help us find out some of these reports that exist. Because, like I said, I don't want to reinvent them, but then I want to focus them on us specifically, if we can. So.
Yeah, I'd like to participate in that.
Okay, great. Happy to have you.
Me, too.
We can't three of us. We can only have two of us meet because of the Brown Act.
Could we have a motion to establish some sort of like formal meeting of our group with their group, maybe? And have?
Or the other thing, because it's probably gonna be hard to get all of them to come, because they meet during the day, we meet at night. But what we might ask is Rosie Tahada could come, and maybe then we can all do it. Maybe have her as somewhat of a presenter, and I could just tell her what our intent is to having her here. Maybe that's better, that we don't all miss it.
Absolutely, that's great, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good. I'll do that. Okay. That's better. We'll see if she can come to the next meeting. Or if she can't, if we want to do some special meeting, it'd have to be noticed, but we might be able to do more of a roundtable thing than this type of thing, as long as we notice it.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So we do it in the conference room. So either way. Or I suppose we could also, well, figure that out, too. I was gonna say, maybe we can have this commission meeting in the conference room for something like that, which would be an easier way to have a conversation. But the public can also comment if they want to come, so.
Thank you.
We can talk about that. Any more additional comments on this item?
I would like to get a copy of, or like just the links of the websites that you, the comparable websites that you or the staff put together.
So I was like, oh, I have one more idea. I know that often, a lot of city websites have to use Google Translate as their accessibility, language accessibility feature. But I was wondering if we could have our page be fully translated and like, by a person, not AI, and have all the languages shown by the top three languages in Daly City.
Is that possible?
Look into that.
You have, no, okay. Are we good?
Yep.
Okay, great. Well, we got a good start there.
Great, thank you.
So we're gonna go down to reports for commissioners. I don't know if that's called as quite a report, but we talked about putting our bios on the website. But also, I thought it might be helpful if staff could provide the bios of us to each other, so we can have them ahead of time. We'll know what's gonna go on the website and just get to know each other a little better by our bios. Oh, are they in there? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. I didn't get that far. I didn't see them. Oh, you know what? That's because I'm using, when I put my binder. It's okay, now I'm using the wrong one. Okay, I got it. All right, there you go. So we have them. And then the only other comment I had was what I mentioned earlier, either do some research on some data, or as we move forward, we may want to just do our own survey to dig deeper. Because when I went to the census, it didn't have a whole lot. I mean, there's like basically 50% women in Daly City, sort of almost a 50/50. But it didn't offer real specifics, you know, like age groups or, you know, very little that I thought really helped us. So like I said, we'll see if we can get some things from Rosie, but we might want to create our own at some point, so we can really drill down to the actual residents, female residents of the city. So you might want to just think about that. Then we'll have Rosie meet with us if we can next time. And then we'll start, maybe we'll have to have a little workshop to put together a survey, something we can all roll up our sleeves and try to come up with what we think is pertinent.
Yeah, I'd be able to do that.
So those are just my comments. If anybody had any?
Yeah, as we start disseminating information to the community or asking for feedback, I I want to be care, or I would like to know how we'd like to frame, like, I would like a more gender expansive, like maybe secondary line for what we mean by Women's Commission, because I don't want to be operating just a binary here. But like, I know that we have all sorts of people in our community that might identify in a more feminine way or women way or other. So I'd love to be able to bring them into this space if possible. I don't know if we can maybe, for a different meeting, talk about what that looks like or see other examples of commissions that maybe have approached that.
Is that something that needs to be governed by the council since it was part of the proclamation or the creation of this committee? Because they specifically talked about sort of what language to use and not to use when creating the commission.
It's probably something you can discuss. Or you can have a workshop and we'll discuss about it as you discuss your bylaws and furthering the mission of the commission.
Because the mission of the commission is, is it crafted by the body?
It's crafted by the council.
It's crafted by the council, but the bylaws that govern the.
It's going to be crafted by the body. It's going to be what, how you see furthering that work and see the mission of.
Yeah, well, in that case, I also support having it as a discussion item in a future meeting. Natasha, thank you for bringing that up. And I think it's worthy to, for us to have a discussion around.
The Girl Scouts have done it. We can do it.
Any other commissioner reports or comments? Okay, staff, do you have anything else, Natalie?
Nothing else. Thank you.
Just gave you lots of work already. Okay, if that's the case, then no other comments. Is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Was she supposed to read the bios?
I'm sorry, I have a hard time hearing between.
Sorry, I turned it off. Was that supposed to be part of the meeting?
I think she referenced the bios. I didn't know if you wanted to go through the bios, but she did mention them.
I just thought it would be nice to have them so everybody can, you know, some of you I know better than others, and it's just kind of an initial greeting, so to speak. I don't know, we need to go through them.
Got it. Then.
Yeah, I had a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.